He will interrupt when someone in the other room wishes to speak. If, in fact, in the other room there's only a hundred people, I will bet we could probably fit them in here, but if there's more than that, we should not try to do it because the room is pretty full and I believe it's fairly warm in the back. Is that right? In the back, is it fairly warm? Okay. How many people, Kathy, do you think we have here? Two thousand, close to two thousand? Okay. Well, we have a lot. And it's nice to see so many people here participating in this democratic process. I think this is terrific. And I would like to extend my personal apology for not being able to accommodate you the first time, but I think we can accommodate you quite well tonight. Some of you have asked for the lights to be turned up. We really can't do that because if people are to see the screens, this is about as high as the light gets and the people in the back really do need to see the screens. So this is a bit of an eye test for those of you who are in the dark. I'd like to start out with an announcement perhaps some of you knew, but Acton won the state championships for the academic decathlon. I think you know that. They went to Phoenix. That really didn't have anything to do with the announcement at all. They placed 11th in Phoenix and they're on their way back now. However, they were to take Flight 848 from Chicago, which was canceled because of the weather, and now some of them are on Flight 828 that gets in at 8:41 and the rest of them are on Flight 1550 that gets in at 11:39 PM. So if any of you had children in that, congratulations, and some of you may have to leave a little early to get to the 11:39 flight. We'll start in with the consent calendar. And I think, how many of you, just raise your hands, have never been to a town meeting before? Quite a few. Okay, I will explain the consent calendar again. I have a series of articles that are on the consent calendar. I have a series of articles that are on the consent calendar. Can you hear me now? Okay. And I will read off the article. I will tell you what the article is about. And if two or more people wish that to be held, put back in the regular order of articles, we will do that. If a specific article has no one or not two people trying to hold it, we will take all of those articles in which there was no discussion and we will pass them in one single motion without discussion. Let's get started doing that. And by the way, if you can't hear me, please just holler out as you did louder. I'm sorry, sir. What are you rising to? He's at microphone three. We've numbered the microphones. One, two, three, four, five, six.
I wish, I request the presence of the elected members to be present.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, sir. Say that again, please.
Is this operating?
Yes, speak directly into the microphone if you will.
I should like to have the elected selectmen of the town of Acton present and present to oversee the...
I believe, sir, they are present and they're at this table.
Are they all present? All?
All present.
Oh, yeah. Well, if I may say so...
Would you speak into the microphone, sir?
I am astonished at the fact, because of the fact that they are the executive...
I'm sorry, sir. Into the microphone, please.
They are the executives, the executives in control of the operations and expenditures of the town of Acton. So I think it was very appropriate for them to allow this meeting to take place. Not all people are affluent and can afford the increased cost of real estate taxes that is proposed by this article.
I'm sorry, sir. I think you're out of order. Would you please sit down?
Beg your pardon?
I think you're out of order, sir. Would you please sit down? We're not discussing any budgetary article at the moment.
What, this is...
If you want to discuss the procedure, sir, please feel...
It's a procedure...
Go right ahead.
It's a procedure at an assembly.
Do you have a comment regarding the procedures, sir? You may make any comment you wish on the procedures, but not on any specific article as yet. We will first deal with the consent calendar. I will read... Okay, I'll try to speak into the microphone here. I am now swallowing the damn thing I have, you know? And my back is broken from bending over, but... I want ten cents a head tonight for this thing, Kathy. I can see this is going to be a tough night. Consent calendar. Mrs. Tavernier moves that the town take up the eighteen articles as listed in the consent calendar on pages forty-four and forty-five of the warrant. I will now call the individual articles. If two people want the article held, just yell out "hold." Don't go to a microphone and I'll hold the article. Article three, Council on Aging Van Enterprise Budget. Article four, Nursing Enterprise Budget. Article five, Septage Disposal Enterprise Budget. Article six, Nezwick Enterprise Budget. All right, I get two people holding Article six. Article seven, Merriam School Enterprise Budget. Article thirteen, Storm Appropriation. Article eighteen, Amend the Charter Commission on Disabilities. Article nineteen, Self-Funding Programs. Article twenty-four, Clarification of Zoning Bylaw. Article twenty-six, Release of Interest in Real Estate Willow Street. Article twenty-seven, Chapter Ninety, Highway Reimbursement. Article twenty-eight, Street Acceptances. I hear one hold on street acceptances, Article twenty-eight. How many people are holding Article twenty-eight? One, two. All right, I see two. Article twenty-eight. Article twenty-nine, Amendment to Non-Criminal Bylaw. I hear one people holding Article twenty-nine. One person. Where is that one person who's holding Article twenty-nine? No sneak holds here. I want you to raise your hand.
Lay back on the right.
Okay. Is there a second person?
All.
All, okay. Article thirty, Relocation and Layout of Charter Road. Article thirty-one, Piper Road Sidewalk Easement. Article thirty-two, Charter Road Sidewalk Easement. Article thirty-three, High Street Easement. And finally, Article thirty-four, Acceptance of Gifts of Land. All right, by my count, we have held Articles six, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. Seeing no one standing, does anybody wish to comment on these articles? Board of Selectmen, do you wish to comment on them? No, you do not. Finance Committee does not wish to comment? All right, seeing nobody standing to comment, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read, holding the three articles six, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, we'll move to Article one. Before we get into Article one, let me just give you some general direction tonight if I can. We have six microphones in this room, and we have a number of microphones in the other room. We're numbering the microphones, one, two, three, four, five, six. When you go to a microphone and I recognize you, please, particularly the first time you speak, state your name and address, and then, of course, speak. I would appreciate it if you would keep your remarks fairly short and directly on the subject. Because I believe that there's some people who find that the meeting tonight may be a little bit contentious, I would ask you to be very kind in the way you treat people with opposing views. I believe everybody here has a view on any number of articles and they have an absolute right to state their view in any way that they wish without anybody in the audience deriding them or making light of their position. If anybody does that, I'll ask them to leave the auditorium. When you're speaking at a microphone, I would ask you to state the purpose of your argument as succinctly as you can, and I would like you to speak either in favor of an article or opposed to an article, but I would like you not to impugn the motivations of anyone who might be on the other side of an article. If you do that, I will ask you to stop speaking. If you do not stop speaking, I will ask you to leave the auditorium. So I want to control this thing fairly tightly tonight. Certainly, you have a complete right to state your position, but let us not cast doubt on other people's position. With that said, let's move on to Article one. There are a number of articles or a number of motions under Article one. By my count, there are about six, and we'll vote them one at a time. Article one deals with choosing town officers. Mrs. Tavernier moves that the town fix the compensation for elected officers as shown in the warrant on page forty-seven. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Board of Selectmen? Finance Committee?
No recommendations.
No recommendations from the Finance Committee. Anybody wish to speak? I'm sorry, that microphone three.
Three? You mean it's not operating? Is this going to be dictatorily controlled? This assembly going to be dictatorily controlled?
Nope, I hope not.
Well, it seems to be that way.
Well, do you wish to say something, sir?
Yes. I wish to say that I am against the article that's going to be presented. Not all people are affluent and can afford the increased costs that will accrue if there...
Excuse me, sir. Would you turn his microphone off, please? Sir, I think, do you wish to speak to the budget article? Yes. I'll turn his microphone back on now.
They are the controllers. They should have the controllership of the funds.
No, I'm...
And controllership means zero funding.
Sir, we're talking now about Article one. I think, I may be mistaken, but I... That's not a comment, is it? That's the heating system hissing, isn't it? I don't need that. Sir, I think you wish to speak to Article ten, and when Article ten comes, you surely can say what you'd like, but we're now discussing Article one, which doesn't relate to the town's budget. You can't hear me plainly. Well, when we come to Article ten, and I think that's the article that you wish to speak to, you can say whatever you like to Article ten, but now we're on Article one and I, from the nature of your comment, I don't believe you were talking about Article one. Article ten is the budget. Article ten is the budget, sir. I'm sorry, sir. I can't delay the whole meeting to discuss with you what article you wish to speak to. I'm going to assume it's Article ten. Do we have any other comment on the first motion under Article one to fix the compensation for elected officers as shown in the warrant on page forty-seven? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Edward Bennett nominates Malcolm S. McGregor Sr. as trustee of the West Acton Fireman's Relief Fund, term to expire in 1996. Are there any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, we will vote on Malcolm S. McGregor as trustee of the West Acton Fireman's Relief Fund. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Malcolm S. McGregor Sr. nominates William Clower as trustee of Acton Fireman's Relief Fund, term to expire in 1996. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, I declare nominations closed. All in favor of William Clower as trustee of Acton Fireman's Relief Fund, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Francis S. Moretti nominates Shirley Toll as trustee of the Charlotte Goodno Fund, term to expire in 1996. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll declare nominations closed. All in favor of Shirley Toll as trustee of the Charlotte Goodno Fund, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Cornelia Huber nominates John Powers as trustee of the Elizabeth White Fund, term to expire in 1996. Are there any other nominations? Seeing nobody standing, I'll declare nominations closed. All in favor of John Powers as trustee of the Elizabeth White Fund, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Final motion under this article, motion carried unanimously. Francis Bissell nominates Edward F. Clary as trustee of the Citizens Library Association of West Acton, term to expire in 1996. Any other nominations? I declare nominations closed. All in favor of Edward F. Clary as trustee of the Citizens Library Association of West Acton, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, it's the auditorium.
Where, oh, yes. Go ahead.
Just checking the system here. It's unanimous in this room as well.
I'm sorry. Craig, could you speak a little louder into the microphone?
Yeah, just checking the system here. I want you to know those votes were unanimous in here as well.
Thank you very much. We didn't hear that? Craig Fingerman reported that the votes in the other room were also unanimous. I think what he was telling me is to stop each time we vote and ask him, which he did very nicely, I think. Article two. Mrs. Tavernier moves that the town accept the reports of the various town officers and boards as set forth in the 1992 town report and that the moderator call for any other reports. Do I hear a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mrs. Tavernier, do you wish to speak to your motion? She does not. Anybody else wish to speak to it on the Finance Committee? I don't see anybody wishing to. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak to it? Is there anybody in the other auditorium wishing to speak to it? See, I'm catching on.
None.
None, okay. Then we will vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. How'd it go in the other room, Craig?
Unanimous.
Unanimous, that's beautiful. I will now call for any other reports. Seeing nobody standing to give reports, I'm assuming there's no one standing in the other room, Craig?
That's correct.
And we'll move on to Article, let's see. Three was passed by consent, I believe. Four was passed by consent. Five was passed by consent. And six, I think we held. Is that right? We'll now deal with Article six. Mr. Lake moves that the town appropriate $1,389,030 for the purpose of solid waste disposal and to raise such amount, $1,389,30 be transferred from the solid waste disposal fund. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Lake, your motion.
Thank you for the opportunity to address this issue. Let me take advantage of the crowd just for a few minutes to discuss with you our relationship with Nezwick. Briefly, the history, in the early eighties, the town of Acton was threatened by the state with a closing of the landfill. We were told that within a year or two, the landfill would be closed and that the town should make provisions for disposing of their trash. Acton at that time joined the Northeast Solid Waste Coalition, Nezwick, which is a coalition of twenty-three towns. They issued millions of dollars in funding, the purpose to build an incinerator, hire an operator. The incinerator is in North Andover. The intention of the plan when it was signed, everything sounded promising to the town. The intent was that these twenty-three towns would take all their trash. They would each guarantee a certain amount of trash to the coalition. This trash would be taken to North Andover, incinerated. The heat would be used to generate electricity. The electricity would be sold and the profits from the sale of the electricity would go back to the towns. Unfortunately, along the way, several things happened. First, the restrictions on incineration increased through state and federal regulation. There were required modifications to the plan. We had to make modifications to the facility in order to meet the clean air standards. We were faced with a recession. When the recession came, there was no demand for energy. The receipts for energy dropped off along with the recession. The amount of trash dropped off. Acton had signed up for some 10,000 tons a year of trash to be delivered to Nezwick. We are currently well below that number. The contract is written so that there is a penalty if you do not deliver the trash. There is a penalty if you deliver too much trash. Every opportunity that Nezwick has given us to reduce the amount of trash, we have requested the maximum reduction available in tonnage that we can deliver to the plant. We have been granted several small reductions in tonnage, but still we are basically required to send 10,000 tons of trash to Nezwick every year. The cost they have been charging for the last year was $70 a ton. We know it's going to $90 a ton. We know that because, in fact, it has been $90 a ton, and the managers of Nezwick have been using the stabilization fund that was created at the beginning of the program to make up the difference. And it is because of that that we are before you tonight for an increase in the appropriation. I should say that the town of Acton has managed to stay out of penalty largely because of our highway department supervisor who has gone into the trash brokering business. We were required last year to deliver 10,000 tons. I believe the final number at the end of the year was 10,012 tons. Of the twenty-three towns, we were the ones who were closest to our quota, and it would be remiss of me not to mention Dicky Howe's effort in achieving that. What are we doing about Nezwick? We've taken the assistant town manager and got him on the executive board, the executive advisory board to Nezwick so that we are intimately involved in the details of the Nezwick operation. The original bonds still outstanding from Nezwick, the twenty-three towns agreed to a refinancing this year. The result is that on $200 million worth of bonds outstanding, the towns are going to reap a benefit of $60 million among the twenty-three towns over the life of the bonds by this refinancing. Let me show you briefly where the increase is this year. I get to be the first one to experiment with the 4,000 watt ViewGraff machine here. Basically, our appropriation last year was for $1,017,750. Our request this year is that the enterprise be funded at $1,389,030. The reason for this increase is the increase in disposal cost that we already know of of $96,075. The $200,000 is to rebuild the stabilization fund which the Nezwick directors had emptied. The price of trash, the price, our costs vary with each load we take up there, and it's necessary that there be a stabilization fund. We might pay $93 a ton this week. We might pay $88 a ton next week. It depends on the season, the demand, and everything else, so that there is a need for a stabilization fund. That stabilization fund has been zeroed over the last year or two. In fact, the annual costs have been closer to $90 a ton when the town has been being assessed, $70 a ton, and the difference was being made up out of the stabilization fund. The stabilization fund, Acton's portion of it, is now essentially gone. So these costs were previously underwritten by Nezwick. There's nothing there to underwrite them anymore because the stabilization fund is broke and we now have to absorb the whole cost. There's $15,000 in here to rebuild the trailer floors. The town of Acton owns three trash trailers, which are the largest legal size you can run over the road. They run back and forth continuously to Nezwick, and they have special floors in them, which is the way they're unloaded when they get to the incinerator. It permits us to run with a single operator, no additional crew or anything else. These trailers have been in use for several years and the floors really need to be replaced. We can replace the floors in the three trailers for $15,000. The cost of replacing the trailers themselves is $90,000 apiece. So the only realistic option is to repair and replace the portions of the floor that are gone for a total cost of $15,000. And the cost of operating the transfer station, $60,025. I should point out that every time the state mandates additional recycling, it costs the town more money. As you're all aware, we're now required to recycle all glass and all metal containers. This does two things. First, it means additional costs for the town for setting up a recycling center and recycling this material. Second, it takes that out of the trash stream and makes our 10,000 tons a year look even bigger. even bigger. This is normally what would be considered a mandate by the state on the towns, and there is a law that says when the state mandates programs that cost money to the town, the state has to pay for them. The state cleverly avoided this because instead of mandating the towns to recycle, they went to the incinerators like Nezwick and told them that they can no longer accept cans and bottles. By doing this, it's not a mandate to the town. And the state has the power to regulate that, so this is how the state got around funding the town for the additional cost of recycling. And those of you who follow this probably realize there's a bill in the State House now to delay the operation of this recycling program for two or more years. Although it hasn't passed yet, it's likely that it will pass. Again, it looks like Acton will be penalized for complying with the state law. We got into Nezwick because the state assured us they were going to close every landfill in the state. I would remind you that Concord still has a landfill, Hudson still has a landfill, there are many others. So that the town of Acton often gets penalized for complying with the state law, believing them when they say we're going to close a landfill in a year or two. We do the right thing, we follow the process, we do the environmentally sound thing, and we often end up paying for it. Our conscience is clear. We do have a place to dump our trash. Our landfill has been closed for a number of years. We can continue the operation and function, but we will need this additional money this year. Was that all closed? Questions?
Comments from the, comments from the Finance Committee, please?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee suggests that recommends this article to the town.
Comments from any of the town meeting members? The gentleman at microphone one.
David Tompkins from Pinecone Strand. How do you put it on? Now it's on.
It's on.
I'm David Tompkins from Pinecone Strand. Uh, I, one reason I raised a hold on this was the fact that it requires a two-thirds majority, and the others required a majority. Uh, and I was wondering how you were going to count that. Second, uh, point was that, uh, according to the warrant, we show a deficit of eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, uh, in estimated income for Nezwick, based on, I guess, the enterprise fund fees. And we also show a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar penalty that we have to pay, apparently, for not providing our quota at some point. And I just want to point out that put those two together, and you have almost the same amount as the override that didn't pass. Uh, I think that the, uh, Nezwick was a boondoggle, and that the town should do whatever is possible to, and I'm sure you are, to get us out of it in some fashion. Also, there are a number of many businesses and communities within Acton who do not take advantage of the transfer station, uh, for one, one of probably several reasons, one of which is the cost is very high. Number two, the, um, the penalties for a possible, quote, violation, as I understand it, are also very severe violations, such as finding a, some bit of environmentally toxic waste in, in a batch. So there are many businesses, many communities, some, uh, communities within Acton who are not taking advantage of this, are not able to take advantage of it, in fact, and dispose of their waste better and, and cheaper by hauling it out of town. And, uh, it seems unfortunate that these people have to pay through taxes for something that they are not able to take advantage of.
You, you asked one question that I can't answer, and that is how are we going to count the vote? It, it only requires a simple majority. This is not a two-thirds majority vote. It, it may say that it is.
Says it.
It, it, right, it is not, though that's a mistake.
Okay.
It's only a simple majority, so counting is pretty easy. Uh, other comment, Mr. Lake?
Yeah, with, uh, with respect to the settlement this year, there are several outstanding lawsuits between the towns and the Nezwick operation. The town lost a, a case with Nezwick this year, which was the three hundred and some odd thousand dollars you're talking about. That becomes an additional assessment to the town, and the town has to pay it. Being in Nezwick is much like being in a regional school district. You really get an assessment from Nezwick to the town, and it has to be paid. An individual town cannot refuse to pay its assessment. The individual town's recourse is to deal with the executive board. Acton is actively involved in the process of cost control at Nezwick. We have threatened to file suit. I believe we actually did file suit last year, which we withdrew in order to allow the refinancing and to save the sixty million dollars in interest costs over the life. The outfit during the bonding could not bond if towns were suing Nezwick at the time. There's an ongoing dispute about how you pay for trash disposal. Should we pay the actual cost by selling dump stickers? Dump stickers would be in the order of three or four hundred dollars for a dump sticker if it was taken completely out of the tax base. The cost of dump stickers partially defrays the cost of dealing with trash. You can make the argument that the people who take their trash to the dump should pay for it. On the other hand, the people who take the trash to the dump are all from Acton, and they do pay for it, and if it shows up on your tax bill, the portion that's on your tax bill is at least deductible on your federal tax. The eighty dollars that you pay for a dump sticker is not a deduction on your income tax. So that to the extent that a portion of the trash bill remains on the tax rolls, at least it's deductible on your state and federal tax as a tax. If you took the total cost of trash disposal, put it on stickers for three or four hundred dollars apiece, and it could be higher than that even. There would be no deductibility on your, your taxes at all. And we just feel that what we have now is a reasonable split between those who use the dump and the tax bill. Was there another question I didn't address there?
No, I mean, say the eighty dollars is not deductible? Is that what you're?
Is there anyone here from the IRS tonight?
Microphone two.
Bill Katie, Starver Hill Road. The question I have is about the issue of how much of the appropriations through Nezwick can be bonded and how much we're paying through a permanent tax increase. The three hundred and fifty thousand dollar amount, or there was another amount I heard of eight hundred thousand dollar figure that was payable. Number of towns have, have spread that out over a number of years. Uh, arguments have been made that if you defer the amount that you pay, you pay a penalty, and therefore, uh, you didn't want to do that. But you can always put a bond over, pay the bill, and then pay the bond over a number of years, five years. And, uh, once the bond is paid off, we don't have a permanent rate increase, uh, or permanent tax increase. Why wasn't these amounts, uh, associated with Nezwick bonded?
Well, originally, I don't know what the, we know what the original Nezwick bonding was. It's over, it's currently two hundred million dollars.
I'm talking about Acton's portion.
Yes, and Acton's portion is a portion of that two hundred million dollars. And what would you have us do?
The amount that you had, that you're putting through this year, uh, eight hundred, that was part of the override amount, could have been put through as a bonded amount and, and voted by a town to be part of a bond issue for half a million dollars or eight hundred thousand dollars, whichever amount it was, actually, rather than having to pay the, put it in as an override item, and then pay that override item on a permanent basis.
I, I guess I missed the point. The Nezwick agreement was for a specified period of time, I believe it was thirty years? It was twenty years. And the agreement is such that at the end of twenty years, the plant is owned by the operator. We are bound to pay all the expenses of construction, all the expenses of operation, guarantee the operator a profit. In return for this, we are supposed to share in energy sales.
I understand, I understand that. I designed one for southeastern Massachusetts myself.
I guess the question should have been asked ten years ago when we signed the agreement, why this wasn't done?
I'm talking about the increase that you had, you had a one-time increase that came through. All right, the fine.
Are, are you talking about the lawsuit settlement?
Yes, yes. Right, that amount didn't have to go into the tax base as a permanent tax increase. That is a one-time item. It had been bonded over a number of years. When the bonding was paid off, then our taxes go back down as a result of that. But the town officials decided this year that they would pass that through. It, it isn't in? The bill wasn't paid as out of, out of the current tax increase?
The bill was paid out of free cash.
It's paid out, all right, it's not part of the tax increase?
The bill was paid, and there was no interest cost incurred to the town. That was a one-time judgment against the town.
Okay, that was the question.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
The gentleman at, uh, microphone four, in the back.
Yeah, my, my name's Ernie Jenkins, I'm from School Street in Acton. Uh, a couple of questions if I could. I thought there's a waiver with regard to individual disposals of, we were talking toxics, we were talking recyclable materials as applied to the individual. And the other thing that's bothering me is to continually hear the fact that I can deduct this from my taxes. I've lived here as a renter for about seventeen years. Okay, and I've paid taxes indirectly for seventeen years, and I don't deduct them. I still pay for my dump sticker, and I don't deduct that. And it's an awful lot of things that renters don't deduct, and I know there's an awful lot of owners in this town, and I could well have been one. But the pure and simple fact is renters are paying these taxes that they don't deduct. So if we're going to keep talking the fact that you can deduct it, let's allow for some of the people, in fact, a lot of people, that can't.
I, I don't think that that was a question, I think that was a statement. Recognize the gentleman at microphone five, in the middle.
Hello?
That is you, sir, you've got it.
Yes, uh, my name is Jim Hahn, fourteen Robert Road. I have a question about Article number six. If we pass this article, are, are we approving the sum of one million, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand and thirty dollars, or are we approving any other sum?
Mr. Lake.
Yes, we, we approve the total amount that's in the budget. This one million, three, is made up of all the fees and all the income. It's not all appropriated out of taxes. This is partially paid by the dump sticker prices and any income we receive through operation of the transfer station. What we're voting for is a total appropriation. And, uh...
Hello? Yes, uh, I guess what I don't quite understand is what the term or any other sum means.
Uh, for, any other sum, it gives us some flexibility to change the number between the article and the motion. Uh, you, you're going to vote one million, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand and thirty dollars. That's what we're going to vote on. The any other sum, in this case, is meaningless as a term. Just gives you flexibility in the beginning to put a different number in front of the town.
It's in there in case we sell a dump sticker, uh, tonight.
Any other comment? The lady at microphone two.
Please, uh, this is not working?
No, it is working.
Uh, I'd like to ask you a question. When you have all these recycling bins that collect the glass and the, and the tin cans and whatever else you're collecting, um, who gets those, and do they pay for that? I mean, it seems to me like I'm paying for somebody's trash, uh, which I'm not accumulating. Um, I, I just have my daughter and me, and we hardly, you know, have any trash at all. And, um, along with everything else, we're paying through the nose for an awful lot of stuff. Are we not getting any money for this recycling material that we are, uh, collecting for people nice and clean and, and so forth? Hi, Norm.
Hi, how are you, Marie?
I don't know.
Long, long time.
I haven't seen you.
Norman, was this a set-up question? Something you could answer? Was this what it was? Go right ahead.
I haven't seen Norman for twenty-two or twenty-three years.
That, that has got to be out of order. Or Norman's out of order.
That was not in a biblical sense.
Oh, oh, okay. Norman, we don't take the bragging here too, too much.
Let, let, uh, let me address the whole issue of recycling. I don't want to take up all the time tonight, but in point of fact, there's no money in recycling. Some of us can remember when Boy Scouts used to have paper drives to raise money. People were buying paper for forty dollars a ton. Doesn't happen anymore. There's only two or three places in New England that recycle newsprint now, for instance. There is no market for recycled newsprint. The price kept dropping until it got to the point that if you bring it here, we will accept it in your truck. And then it got to the point that don't bring it here because we don't have any room for it, and we won't accept it even if you bring it here. And then it got to, if you want to bring it here with some money too, we, we will accept it. Uh, there is no real market for plastic or bottles or cans, but everybody is required to deal with them. We have made a deal with BFI, and BFI is taking all our cans and bottles and newspaper. No, we are not making money in the recycle operation. We have a market for the material, which is more than a lot of towns have. We are capable of complying with the state law, but nobody is paying us for old bottles and old cans and, and plastic. Scrap metal goes up and down. Sometimes you pay, sometimes they pay, depending on the market for scrap metal. But basically, there's no money in recycling, and no, the town is not making money.
No, but, I mean, I think that they should, because when I buy, uh, stationery or boxes or bags that have been made from recycled paper, I pay more for those than I do from fresh stuff, which shouldn't.
Ma'am, I, I think we're, excuse me, ma'am.
It should be a lot cheaper than cutting down trees, which is what I'm trying to protect, along with myself.
If you'd like to buy some of our bottles?
Norman, 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 let me interrupt here. I think, I think we're getting beyond the discussion of this article, and I'd like to get back, I'd like to get back on the discussion of the article. If you have a specific question or statement, pro or con the article, ma'am, please make it. Thank you.
No, I, I strongly object to this horrendous price of over a million dollars just to, to have trash disposed of. You know, I can remember when this was not necessary. I think we should start thinking about that kind of thing. You go to Belgium, where my relatives are, you don't have this problem. They're not going to pay a million dollars to dispose of their trash.
I'll recognize the lady at microphone, uh, five.
Betsy Darcy, two oh nine Great Road. Um, I know this only addresses a small piece of the article, but I'd like to suggest that if the town is short on tonnage, that maybe they look to condominium associations and, uh, help them remove their trash and also give them a bang for their tax dollars.
I'll recognize the lady at, uh, microphone three. No.
There, now you can hear me.
I certainly can.
All right. Um, three questions. Norman, what are the long-term, what is our long-term commitment in years? Our long-term commitment in dollars? And what has been done for a long-range plan to look at other options?
Okay, let me take those one at a time. We are bound to Nezwick for the life of the agreement. There are severe penalties to withdraw unilaterally from Nezwick. As I say, it's an assessment to the town, it's not something we get a choice of voting each year. In effect, Nezwick comes to us and says, here's what it's going to cost to take your trash this year. And we are in a position where for the life of the agreement, and so that the bonds are not in default and everything else, the town really has no choice except to pay the assessment. the town really has no choice except to pay the assessment. The town does what it can to get on... We are on the executive board. We participate actively in Nezwick. As I say, we came closer to complying with our quota this year than any of the other twenty-three cities and towns. Trash is really a big operation. We are bound to it for the life of the agreement. As we near the end of the agreement, which will be another ten years, we will certainly be looking at alternatives.
Thank you.
Any other comment? I don't see anybody standing at any of the micro... I do see one person. Yes. Oh, thank you very much. Yes. Again, for the first time you speak, would you identify yourself and the street? Craig, do we still get everybody awake in the other auditorium? Craig.
We're all here.
Craig, do we have people in the other auditorium who wish to speak to this issue?
None have arisen yet.
Okay, thank you. Well, keep them down, Craig.
Okay.
Gentleman at microphone one.
I'm Rich Alpert from Jackson Drive. Perhaps you stated this in your opening. If I saw, I apologize. What is the consequence of disapproving the article? What happens if it's voted down?
If the article is voted down, we will not have sufficient money to pay our assessment to Nezwick. If we don't pay it, we will be sued. I presume that a state court will order a judgment, and we will pay it. And we will pay it.
So now we have to pay it anyway, right?
Exactly.
Makes it easy.
The gentleman... The gentleman at microphone five.
I'd like to move with previous question.
Do I hear a second? All in favor of cutting off debate, say aye. Opposed, say no. He's very near unanimous here. How was it in the other one, Craig?
It's unanimous here.
Unanimous? Well, that's great. We will now vote on the motion as read. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye. Opposed, say no. Craig, how about in your room?
The motion carries near unanimously.
Alright, and it did in this room too, so the motion is carried. Let's see. Article seven was dealt with on the consent calendar. We'll move now to Article eight. Mr. Hunter moves that the town adopt a fifteen-year amortization schedule beginning in fiscal year nineteen ninety-seven in lieu of the four-year amortization schedule previously voted to repay local teachers' compensation deferred for fiscal year ninety-two and nineteen ninety-three as permitted by Section One of Chapter three thirty-six of the Acts of nineteen ninety-one. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Hunter.
Ladies and gentlemen, I ask your patience at the outset, as this is a complex issue, and I feel forced to give you a fairly lengthy explanation of what is proposed here and why. As the warrant summary under this article indicates, the Board of Selectmen, working in conjunction with the school committees and the finance committee, recommend that this town meeting revise the action we took at last year's town meeting in regard to the amortization of the fiscal year nineteen ninety-two and nineteen ninety-three local teachers' summer pay deferral, usually referred to simply as deferral. Please keep in mind, this article applies only to the local schools. Decisions in regard to deferral in the regional schools are made by the regional school committee, not this town meeting. And the regional school committee has already revised the regional school deferral amortization in the same manner as is here being recommended for the local schools. The local school amortization is a town meeting decision. That is what this article is about. Before I explain our changed local school amortization recommendation tonight, however, remind you what deferral was. Deferral was a scheme or gimmick offered by the state as some small relief from the drastic cuts in local aid, relief that didn't cost the state any money. Acton adopted that gimmick as part of our strategy of preserving as much of our local schools and municipal services for as long as we can in the current downward spiral. Deferral involved rolling the accounting for teachers' summer pay into the following fiscal year. The teachers got the same paychecks as usual. Let me stress that because there's been some confusion on that point. The teachers were paid as usual, all their summer money in June, but the accounting for one month of that pay portion was twice pushed ahead into the following fiscal year. It's easier to think of it as having in one year paid the teachers their June, July, and August paychecks all in June, but taken the July and August money out of the succeeding fiscal year's accounting after July first. The temporary state statute which allows this involves pushing forward the accounting for the two months of teacher pay, the deferral, to be successfully rolled over then into each following fiscal year until nineteen ninety-seven. Then cities and towns must, over no more than the following fifteen years, recognize at least one fifteenth of the deferred amount each year, reducing their budgets by that amount. This is a form of deficit financing of operating revenues, something that, other than in times of financial crisis, I'm sure we would not have considered. The effect was to allow us to spend last year roughly six hundred thousand dollars in excess of the revenues received. We did that because the Board of Selectmen was convinced that last year the community would not support a Proposition Two and a Half override, and in any event, the selectmen did not feel it appropriate to seek an override if there was any alternative way to fund the services at the current level. At the same time, our sense was that Acton did not want its services reduced. So no ride was proposed last year. We took deferral instead. However, a number of people felt we should attempt to pay the deferral amount back, by the way, we pay it in effect to ourselves without interest in nineteen ninety-two dollars, to pay it back in a short period of time. Therefore, a four-year amortization schedule was proposed and voted at last year's town meeting. On that schedule, the local school payback portion for fiscal year nineteen ninety-four, the fiscal year we're looking forward at tonight, would be a hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-nine cents. But when the school, town, and finance committee representatives on the coordinating committee reviewed Acton's financial situation for fiscal nineteen ninety-four, we came to feel that too many things were running against us in the upcoming year to voluntarily reduce the local budget by more than a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Further, we cannot be sure that the service reductions required to save that amount in fiscal nineteen ninety-four might not ultimately be found to be unnecessary. In nineteen ninety-seven, when all the cities and towns that adopted deferral have to begin the incremental shift of the summer pay accounting back into the current fiscal year, many communities are going to face real hardships. Given past history, it seems quite likely that the state, faced with a predictable chorus of complaints at that point, may once again change the rules. Let me remind you of just a few examples where the state has changed the rules on us before. Revaluation. Some years ago, the state passed a statute requiring all cities and towns to go to full and fair valuation, to assess all property a hundred percent. Acton promptly saluted the flag and immediately did so. Most other communities did not. The state did not enforce the law until much later. As a result, Acton's property value relative to other towns shot up, and we had a loss of state education aid as a result. Waste disposal. Norm has spoken to that, so I won't talk further about it. Third example that I put down in my notes was sewers. I was personally promised by state officials that if Acton leaderships would spend considerable effort and political capital to obtain a town meeting vote to sewer South Acton, the state would see that Maynard would be required to work with us in regard to the use of Maynard Sewer Plan. We did vote it, and amnesia set in at the state level. If we get our deferral accounts reduced before nineteen ninety-seven and the state changes the rules, we will have lost valuable services needlessly. In a perfect world, any deferral would not be a tactic of choice. We have chosen it as part of our strategy of trying to give ground as slowly as possible, hoping that the rules of engagement will change before too much of what made Acton unique is lost. We recommend that this town meeting change the local school deferral amortization schedule to extend it out to the maximum permitted by law. In other words, to commence in nineteen ninety-seven and extend for fifteen years, as opposed to the four-year schedule adopted last year. A graphic depiction of the two schemes is shown on page fourteen in your warrant. It is the one called maximum amortization that we are proposing tonight. It would call for an annual shiftback of forty-three thousand, a hundred and sixteen dollars and thirteen cents per year for fifteen years, starting in fiscal nineteen ninety-seven, as opposed to a hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-nine cents for four years, beginning in July one nineteen ninety-three. Several questions were asked at the preliminary budget hearing about Article eight, which have probably occurred to some of you at this much larger gathering here tonight, so I will repeat the questions and answers. Question. Can we later accelerate the amortization if this article is voted tonight? The answer is yes. We can later revisit the schedule again and could shift back to balanced accounting sooner if we chose to do so. The one thing we could not do under the law as it is currently written, given an affirmative vote here tonight, would be to extend the schedule any further. Question. Will deferral create any cash flow problems? The answer is that it could, but we do not see any local problems in the upcoming year. We cannot now project further into the future. Deferral could conceivably cause a need for short-term borrowing in the future in order to cover cash flow requirements. That would, of course, include some interest costs if it occurs. To put this point in context, however, you should know that before deferral, the town had to borrow rather regularly to cover cash flow, including its payments to the schools, until we went to quarterly real estate bills, tax bills. Question. What will happen if town meeting does not vote affirmatively on this article tonight? The short answer is that I don't know. Except that we'll have to cut another hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars from the local schools and/or town budgets. We simply haven't been able to draft a specific fallback plan. I would expect we would move to pass over the remaining financial articles tonight in an attempt on an emergency basis to revise the Article Ten budgets for presentation tomorrow night. The selectmen and school committee members and their respective staffs have agonized over the cuts necessary to produce the B budgets, which will be presented to you later tonight, I hope. Those budgets were built on the assumption that this article would be adopted, since it seems to us to make sense. These last several weeks have been the most extraordinary time that I have seen in my fifteen years as one of your elected officials. I apologize, but we haven't been able to work out a contingency plan this year for everything. In closing, let me just once again remind you that deferral made no difference whatsoever in teacher paychecks, nor does it require any borrowing to date. And we are here voting on just the local school amortization schedule. The regional school schedule has already been changed by the school committee. The Board of Selectmen recommends an affirmative vote on Article eight. Thank you.
Other comment from the finance committee.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee feels that the facts are that the nineteen seventy-seven schedule presents a unique opportunity, particularly in the light of the slow and late payback schedule and the probability that the temporary state statute will find some permanency. The finance committee recommends Article eight to the town.
Other comment, Mr. Cadillac. The microphone two.
Mr. Moderator, Charles Cadillac, Paul River Road. Many of the statements that Mr. Hunter just made are absolutely true, such as, "This did not cost the state any money," and it is deficit spending. Let me attempt, first of all, to explain how I look at this, and also to tell you that I'm opposed to this article and will urge you to vote against it. The amount of money that was involved was one point two million dollars, which was an amount of money that was spent for which corresponding revenue was not provided. Another way to look at it is that, over the past two years, the total bank accounts of the town and schools are one point two million, give or take, lower than they would have been had we not done this. I disagree with the premise that there is no cost involved to this. The cost is what it takes to generate one point two million dollars, or if you have it, the interest that that money can generate for the town. There is a cost, and there will continue to be a cost, and this is one of the reasons I'm against passing this article. Two years ago, when this came up, the school committee, much to their credit, opposed using this gimmick, which is all it is, because they recognized that soon or later, we do have to come up with a revenue to pay for the money that was, in effect, spent. If we vote for this article, we will simply perpetuate a problem. And although I don't certainly question the reasons and the intentions and the motivation, I think what we are doing here, if we pass this article, is continuing along the same way that has gotten this town to the financial problem that it has, which is always putting off solving the problem. This is a problem. It's a one point two million dollar problem. Money we have spent that we have not provided the revenue. We did not defer the spending. We deferred generating the revenue. And if we intend to solve our problems, financial problems, and there'll be a lot more discussion about that in this town meeting, an excellent place to start is to vote no on this article. I know why Mr. Hunter says that we can't rely on the state come ninety-seven to keep the rules the same. I absolutely agree. We can't rely on the state for anything. Therefore, let's rely on ourselves. The state is not gonna give us the money. It will eventually have to be raised through taxes in this town. And one way to solve the problem of where this additional revenue were to come would be to make it part of an additional override, which will come up later in this town meeting, and have the selectmen explain to the town why we're doing this, and whether it's the hundred and sixty-seven thousand or whether we include an equivalent amount, which is for the regional schools, which is, makes for a total of three hundred and thirteen roughly. That is an amount of money that this town should vote for to tax itself, to pay, so that we begin to reduce this one point two million dollar deficit that we have created for ourselves. So I urge you to vote no on this article. Yes, there are ways of solving the problem. Putting it off is not one of them.
Recognize the gentleman at microphone three. I'm sorry, microphone three is not on. Would someone help this gentleman, please?
Seems to be the tendency of the controlling executives supervising the town of Acton have a tendency to be perpetually seeking for a perpetual credit card. Credit cards are costing, they have to be paid for. As regards property, property is a liability. Property has to be maintained. It has to be preserved, and it's costly. It's costly making the personal needs met, because it's not only the tax and... But individuals are not so affluent that they can afford to have everything they want. And I dare say there are many here that would agree with me. Thank you.
Gentleman at microphone two.
Bert Schaefer Flag Road. I disagree with the way the context of this article is being presented, as if the town, by its own lack of character, has gotten itself into this problem, and therefore, it should take its comeuppance. I don't see myself a town that's really wallowing in fat and is massively mismanaged. I don't see that the town has created the recession or any of the other economic difficulties. It seems to me that the real question, and that borrowing in and of itself, other people may disagree, is not a sin. The best companies in the world do it. The best companies in the world do it. The issue of whether or not it represents a sensible action, or not a sensible action, is a comparison of two scenarios. One is one in which you expect the future to be better, and therefore you will be in a better position to deal with this burden in the future, because the whole economic situation will be improving. Property values may improve. The town may not need to have to raise additional taxes. More income may simply flow into the town because of the general economy. The other issue is, indeed, the man who borrows massively on his credit card with no hope at all in the future of anything changing, so that he'll be in a better position to pay it. So I see this issue really as whether one expects things to get better, in which case it makes sense, or worse, in which case it perhaps does not make sense.
Mr. Fingeman, anybody in the auditorium who wishes to speak?
There's no one standing here.
No one standing. There is a gentleman standing at microphone five.
Edward Adalman.
I'm sorry, there's one at four, too. You first, sir, and then I'll take you next.
I'll be brief. Edward Adalman, Old Stone Brook Road. I'd like to agree with both Mr. Hunter and Mr. Cadillac, if I can. I think Mr. Hunter, first of all, deserves some credit for taking a complex issue and explaining it, I think, very clearly and briefly. Thank you. I think your point is, we need to balance the town budget, a point I agree with, and Mr. Cadillac, a point that we need to pay our bills, a point I also agree with. I'm for the article, but I would urge my fellow residents, who are opposed to it, that we need to then raise enough revenue in the town to pay our bills. That's all. Thank you.
Gentlemen, at microphone four.
Good evening. John Morrison, Ninety Charter Road, new resident of Acton. I'm still unsure what this means. If we're looking at a teacher with a thirty-thousand-dollar salary, what, how much of that thirty-thousand dollars ends up in the budget as a result of approving this warrant? And how much of the thirty-thousand dollars ends up in the budget if we turned down this warrant?
Mr. Hunter.
It doesn't have any direct relation to teacher salaries, even though the accounting gimmick used teacher salaries to accomplish the form of deficit financing. The teachers will be paid. The question will be, if the article is not approved on the local level, where do we find an additional one hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-nine cents in cuts? And that would have to come out of the town budget, or the local school budget, or a combination of both. And there's a similar number at the region, although the Regional Committee has voted for deferral. I suppose it's possible that if the town meeting rejected deferral, the Regional School Committee might revisit that issue. But it has a direct relationship to teachers' salaries, only in the sense that we'll have less money to spend on everything, and we'll have to make cuts, and some of that may be teacher salaries, some of it may not. I can't tell you, as I stand here, sir.
Maybe I wasn't clear, but if the whole budget was teacher salaries, and there is a million dollars worth of teacher salaries, what would be the total amount that you would find in the budget if this warrant was approved?
I'm not sure I follow you. I thought about a lot of questions, but it's been a number of years since I presented a school budget, and I didn't work over the teacher salary numbers. We don't know where we would take the money. I think we'd have to caucus and do a quick and dirty, and that may be one reason we'd have to come back tomorrow night on Article Ten, if this fails.
Let me make a suggestion, sir. It may be that the way you phrase the question is difficult for the Board of Selectmen to answer. If you would choose to come down front and consult them privately, perhaps you can get a good answer to your question. And, by the way, I'm delighted to see new residents coming to town meetings. I recognize Mr. Richter.
Hello?
At microphone one.
Is it on?
Yes.
Yeah, it's on. Ed Richter on Brewster Lane. I'd like to speak for the article. It seems to me that by deferring a little bit longer, and stretching, or, really, by stretching out the payment period, we make our annual expenses much more palatable, and right now, we're really faced with a tough problem this year. And I think that fifteen, putting it off for a fifteen-year period is not an inordinate length of time, and I think it's a very sensible move. Thank you.
Mr. Hunter.
Let me make just one additional comment, if I may. About two years ago, we had a particular issue before the Board of Selectmen, and a number of people came in, and it turned into a discussion of Proposition Two and a Half. And one of our esteemed citizens stood before us and said very forcefully, "I voted for Two and a Half to reduce my taxes, not to reduce my services." Ladies and gentlemen, there is a logical connection between the two. And what we're talking about tonight, although we're talking dollars, is services. And as I indicated, the strategy that has brought us here recommending this deferral is that we have tried to give ground as slowly as possible, and preserve the services, and preserve the staffs, and take advantage of everything that we can find to take advantage of, hoping that other towns will hit the wall first, and the rules of engagement will change. Because frankly, we have a great structural problem. We don't see the way clear to run this town without overrides, without deferrals, or similar tactics, at any level of services, for any indefinite time into the future, because our revenues simply do not equal our expenses.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Katie.
Mr. Moderator, we do have one speaker in the auditorium.
I'll take him after Mr. Katie.
Thank you.
I was moving the previous question.
I'll take him before Mr. Katie.
Is this mic live?
Yes. Stay there, Mr. Katie. You'll be up next.
We are alive and well here in the auditorium. I thought someone should speak.
How many people do you have in the auditorium?
I would estimate about two-hundred people.
Two-hundred. Great. Yes, go right ahead.
That's a gross underestimation. I'd like to ask Mr. Hunter a question referring to the chart on page fourteen, with the deferral options, and I just really want to get an understanding of this. Is it not true, sir, that the money generated by the so-called gimmick created a direct benefit for this generation of citizens? In other words, that these were funds able to supply town or school services for the people sitting in the gym in the auditorium? Is that true?
I think that comment could fairly be made, just as the services in the past, for people like myself, who sent children to school years ago, were generated by other people. Yes.
Okay. And then, according to this graph, then, the next generation coming up, our teenagers, ten, twelve, thirteen years out hence, they will be paying on their budget approximately about eighty or ninety thousand dollars per year. Will they derive any benefit or services from the school or town from that expense item in their budget?
I think the honest answer to that is not that year. The combined total number, by the way, is eighty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and three cents for the town and the region. I suppose you could make the same argument for anything that had been stretched out into the future, like, for instance, the cost of this building.
No, that is not the same, because that generation will derive the use of the cost of this building. But there will be absolutely no benefit to the next generation, who will be paying off monies which provided services to this generation. And that's the only point I'd like to make.
I recognize, what, yes, your point of order is what? I'm sorry, Evelyn, I don't think the microphone is on. If you would introduce yourself and stand up.
Thank you. Evelyn Olshewski, Seventy-seven Maygog Hill Road. My understanding is that when there are people at the microphones, your ruling has been in the past, I don't remember if you reiterated it tonight, that anybody who has not spoken before is going to get a chance before anybody who has spoken before. Now, when Mr. Katie was about to speak, there were two people at the microphone. I don't know, I know one of them, I don't know the other one, I don't know what they were going to say, but I think they should have had preference, and should have been allowed to speak.
Well, let me answer your point of order, because your memory is quite a bit different from mine. And at my age, Lord knows, my memory's not that great.
Mine's wonderful.
I generally... What we do is, we allow anybody to speak for the first time, before people can speak a second time. But if there's ten people standing at microphones, and someone wants to get up and move the previous question, and they had to wait until everybody has spoken, there would be no reason to move the previous question. So we've never followed that procedure, and I would not follow it. My memory's not good, but I'm positive about that. Mr. Katie.
If I remember right, I'm moving the previous question.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
The motion's seconded to cut off debate. All in favor of cutting off debate, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. How about in the other room, Craig?
It's unanimous.
It's unanimous. All right? We will vote on the motion as read. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
In the other room, Craig?
The motion carries.
Motion is carried in this room as well. The motion is carried.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to Article Nine. Article Nine. Mr. Mullen moves that two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars be appropriated for the removal and replacement of the fuel storage tanks located at fourteen Forest Street. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, be authorized to borrow two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, under General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, Paragraph Nine. And that the town manager be authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project. And further, that sixty thousand dollars be raised and appropriated for the debt service. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This vote does require a two-thirds majority, because it's a borrowing article. Mr. Mullen, to your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think the great selling point on this particular article is that, after this one, we get to Article Ten, so please keep that in mind as I go through this. My name is Bill Mullen. I'm a Board of Selectmen member. Thank you. The question here is, we have looked at this removal of the storage tanks from the D-W site, and taken it basically from the twenty-one implications. As most of you are probably familiar, there is a law in Massachusetts which puts an incredible burden on owners of sites that have become contaminated with oil and other hazardous materials. These particular tanks are some twenty-two years old, and rather than run the risk of having them burst, or develop a leak, and get into the soil, we have determined now to try to remove them. The life cycle of these is roughly twenty-five years. It seems to me to be a very prudent thing to do. Just anticipating a question, which I'm sure will come up, as to whether this should have been a debt exclusion, or should have, or why it is included in a general override. I think, basically, it probably could have been a debt exclusion. It was included in a general override, because there's an enormous backlog of items for capital improvements, and those, these will not go away. Unlike some of these others, we have essentially amortized the cost, pushed it out over five years, matching assets and liabilities. I think this is a little bit of an accelerated pace, but I don't think it is imprudent. We're going to be removing three of the tanks. At this time, the bid, the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars represents a bid, an estimate, rather. We've not bid the job at this time. And that's it, if anybody has any questions.
From the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Mr. Cadillac.
I commend the Selectmen for making this a separate article, rather than folding it into the omnibus budget. At least we get to take a look at what this money goes for, and I think it's a great idea to do this. However, picking up on Mr. Mullen's comment, I do strongly urge, and Mr. Moderator, you will be glad to know, that we considered an amendment, but decided against it, given the time and place.
Thank you.
So we will make, I will make this a very strong recommendation, that the Selectmen do make this a debt override, debt exclusion override. And since, I think there are a number of people in this meeting who do not understand the difference, who might appreciate knowing it, let me take a minute and make that point. The override, the overrides, plural, that we have been voting for and passing up till this last one, are general overrides, which, if passed, increase the tax levy, and therefore your taxes forever. If you vote a million dollars in a debt, in a override, general override, last year, it's still on the tax bill this year, will be there next year, and so on. A debt exclusion override is only for the amount of money that needs to be spent for that particular purpose. In this case, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars plus interest. You would only increase your taxes one time to pay for that amount of money. Pay it, and that's it. Your tax bill does not stay up by sixty thousand dollars a year forever, as it would if it had been included, if the general override had passed. And it's for that reason that I think things like this are tailor-made. And again, I would urge the Selectmen to put on the next election a debt exclusion override to cover the cost of this article, so we do not build it into the general budget, we do not pay this amount of money forever. Because once we've done this, that amount of money is going to go to do something else. And that's been the problem. And that's been the problem, and that's why many of you have seen your tax bills go up and up and up, because general overrides compound themselves. So please, Board of Selectmen, make this a debt exclusion override.
My only, my only comment on that is that, as there has been an enormous backlog of projects and deferred maintenance, that is, has occurred, the list of the capital requests over the last several years have approached five million dollars. There's an enormous number of vehicles that are running over a hundred thousand miles, for example, and if it weren't for this particular case, there would be another case that would be made for a similar item. I think the point is well-taken, that in the past, there are some items which perhaps could have been included as a debt exclusion, and probably in the future, to the extent that we have to go to additional overrides, they'll probably be carved out. But in this particular case, it is very clear that we have an enormous potential liability here. I would hate to see this be deferred, and during the interim period of time that is occurring, we have a leak, saving ourselves a very modest amount of money in terms of the delay, and incurring an incredible liability. So I would urge its passage on that basis.
Just for the fun of it, I would point out that form requires you to get my permission before you speak. And I'm a little testy about that, Bill, and so work me into the conversation occasionally, if you, if you people can. I'll recognize the gentleman. We do that simply so that the meeting doesn't get out of hand.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you for that tip.
You're welcome. I'm sure you really needed it, yeah. Gentlemen, at microphone three.
Mr. Moderator, I request permission to speak.
You may have it.
Thank you. My name is Jim Moss. I live on Mohegan Road. And Bill, I'd like to address some questions to you, mostly for information. Have these tanks actually been tested?
I will try to answer these questions. I may turn to, for some support.
Now, go ahead. If there's a series of questions, why don't, you know, just talk back and forth.
Yes, they have, yes, they have.
Okay. And what did you find?
There are no leaks.
There are no leaks.
That we are aware of.
Okay. Correct? Are they buried?
Yes, they are.
Okay. So you could not determine whether there was rusting or corrosion on the outside of the tanks?
With the test that was taken, and I'm not an expert at this in any way, but it is anticipated that there are not leaks at this time.
Okay. How much would it cost the town if they did leak?
I don't know that. I do deal with a lot of real estate, and the liability would be enormous if there was a leak of severe proportion. You would have to obviously remove all the soil and deposit it elsewhere, and that would be extraordinarily costly.
At the risk of, could we postpone this action for one or two years? What does the engineer say?
It is, we certainly could. If it was the wisdom of the town meeting, I don't think that would be wise or prudent. What we look at is risk and return. And I think there'd be an enormous risk with little return.
Is your feeling of risk a gut feeling, or is it scientifically supported?[680.62][680.62](laughter)
Well, with my gut, it's a very strong feeling, so...[686.12][686.12](laughter) The life, it is, I've been told that these are, generally have a life of 25 years, on average.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The gentleman at microphone five.
I'm, oh, this is on. I'm strongly in favor of the article. I'm strongly opposed to delaying a minute. In the work that I do, I've removed a number of gasoline and diesel storage tanks, which are underground, which were single-walled steel hull onlineed, and in every case, they were leaking, even though the pressure test indicated they did not. If these, and my tanks were 15 years old. If these are 22-year-old tanks, I would strongly recommend the town meeting approve this article. The contamination, the cost of removing soil, which we have had to do, is equal to the amount of money proposed to remove the tanks themselves. And with no pun intended, I think we're playing with fire if we delay this. My question, though, is what allowance has been made to remove contaminated soil? If not from tank leaking, from overfilling over the years?
There, the budget that is included is to, is assumed that there is not any leakage. If there is surface leakage, I don't know the answer to whether we have made a provision for surface, what's that? The town manager informs me that he feels that he can handle it if it's surface leakage.
Good. The environmental cost is incalculable, and for a town which relies upon its drinking water from groundwater, I'd strongly recommend approval of this motion.[789.19][789.19](applause)
All right, seeing nobody standing, we will vote. This takes a two-thirds majority. I'm sorry, there is a gentleman standing. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Rich Dougherty from Orchard Drive. I would like to support what the gentleman before me said about tank tests not generally being reliable. They can't detect very small leaks, so there could, in fact, for my experience, be leaks occurring. Also, I would like to ask, where are the tanks in relation to the town's drinking water? Are they located right in, over the aquifer that supplies our water, or some distance from the well fields? I'd like to get a feel for that.
I don't believe they're anywhere near that. And anybody else?
The APW building and the closest well is Coner on Main Street and Two Way.
The estimate is that at the, the site of the tanks and the site of the nearest well is about a mile apart.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Now, seeing nobody standing, we will vote. Again, this takes a two-thirds majority, and this is going to be our first test, because two-thirds majority, unless it's unanimous, has to be counted. And there's several ways to count them, including the tellers, but I will try to not cause that to happen. Let us see if we can get a unanimous vote, one way or the other. All in favor of the article or the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. How was it in your room, Craig?
It's unanimous in the auditorium.
It was unanimous in the auditorium. All right. Let me, we clearly have two-thirds majority.[906.82][906.82](applause) But by law, it has to be counted unless it's unanimous. So I'm going to take the vote again.[917.43][917.43](laughter) I haven't been doing this for 17 years for nothing, you know. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, then it is passed. We'll now move on to Article Ten. I think before we get into the article itself, we have some presentations on the general budget. Is that correct? And the Finance Committee is prepared to make a presentation. Mr. Harrigan, who is going to make the presentation? Yeah, you? All right. Mr. Moderator? Members of the town meeting? First lesson here, and we're learning how to use this.
How much higher? How's that? Too high.
All right. Few, this is a few preliminaries, but I think it sets the tone for what's to come. And we should focus for a moment on the strengths of Acton. And basically, our school is outstanding, and you have to give credit to a number of people for that, particularly the teachers, but also the staff and the taxpayers that have funded this organization and entity. In addition to that, on the other side, we have professional staff dealing with the town, and we have very strong volunteer organizations. And don't underestimate the volunteer organizations, because it's through their efforts that ideas have come forth, and that controls have been instilled, and that we maintain both financial conditions, as well as getting the job done. So we do have a strong financial condition of Acton, which you might be surprised to hear about. But if you look at the financial statements in the current annual report, you'll find this. And also, we do have a double A bond rating. So those are a couple of reasons. Now, the next chart is, the next chart is political in nature, but once again, it sets the stage for where we are tonight. The school projects 100 to 125 added students per year. In the next, through the turn of the century. That's rather alarming, and you need to think about that a little bit as we go ahead tonight, and also as we go beyond tonight. The town has a 17 and a half million dollar, five-year capital plan, and this is basically infrastructure repairs and other capital expenses. And there were, there was mentioned earlier that we are behind in that, and we are indeed. More revenues to support these two areas, cost reductions, increased efficiency, and a new plan of attack are needed to support these two needs. We do have talented and creative people, as we have involved in our system, and these creative people and talented people can make a major difference. If you look at this, to me, it says that we do need to plan anew, in addition to more money. Money is not the only answer. We have other things and other avenues that we can pursue. We have the creativity, we have the manpower, and we have the talents. So we have to put them together. Now, the next chart has to do with the infrastructure. And the infrastructure repairs, just to mention the 17 and a half million dollars and a couple of items in here. We, in the, under planning and health for sewers, South Acton and Kelly Corner, 1989 estimate of 7 and 1/2 million dollars. That's the biggest single item. But notice that that's 1987 estimate, so it's a low estimate. And also, we haven't really planned the remainder of Acton for sewers. So that's something further out that we need to be thinking about in our town to bring it up to the standard that we'd want to have in this particular area. So I'll move on to the next item, which is the average tax bill of Acton. This is a wavy line. There's three, three wavy lines, as a matter of fact. The top line is the average Acton tax bill from the year 1984 through approximately '92, with some projections to '94. The center line is the Acton tax bill in constant $1984, and you'll notice that that's relatively flat. Even though the taxes have gone up in Acton, the average tax bill in the neighborhood of 3% to 15% per year, or 1% to 10% more than the state average, or the state median. Nevertheless, the Acton average tax bill is about flat in terms of $1984 constant dollars over those eight years. So that's somewhat interesting, but the point is there that, that the average taxpayer in Acton is paying anywhere from 1% to 10% more than the state median in terms of increases. And so, we'll go on to the next chart. This chart you've seen in the warrant, so I won't spend any time on it. Suffice to say that you can see the state average averages as the school versus town versus other, and the Acton averages is more in connection with the schools, less in connection with the towns, and less in connection with the other. It turns out that if you, well, we'll just leave it at that, on that particular chart. The next chart that I want to show you is, some of it is in the warrant. Now, this, this, we have, we have two entities. We have the school entity, and we have the town entity, and we can combine those into consolidated, into a consolidated financial statement. And so, the estimated income portion of that consolidated statement is on this, this chart here. The cherry sheet funds from the state are indicated there. The regional school aid from the state, federal and local sources are indicated. The school, school choice is a partial amount, not the total school choice, but only that amount which is pooled into the consolidated budget is $304,000. I've identified and flagged for, for reasons that you should understand, just for disclosure, that we have unresolved $323,000 per pupil educational aid from the state. We get about one, I think it's one dollar per pupil, $100 per pupil last year, approximately, from the state, which they call per pupil aid. That amounts to a good sum of money. And that's unresolved because of the fact that we're not certain that that will come in. But I want you to know that we do have school agreement to reduce expenditures if this money does not come in. So we decided that that was fair enough, that we should go ahead, considering this as part of the income. And I will indicate to you that that income, even though I've indicated unresolved there, is included in the first two lines. It is already in those income numbers. So the rest of the numbers are given there. The motor vehicle excise tax, the license and fees, enterprise funds. Max tax levy is $25 million. Transfer from free cash, $801,000. And E and D, that's efficiency and deficiency, which is a school reserve fund of $72,000. And then the overlay, which is the anticipation of some possible tax rebatement of $750,000. So that total estimated income then is $33,210,000. Now, the next chart is, is also in, in the warrant, and suffice to say that if you look at this a little bit, you'll see that we have reduced income totaling in the neighborhood of $1.6 million per year since 1989. A big amount of revenue from the state has, has not come in that was there in 1989. So one of our recommendations addresses this later in the warrant, and we hope to have a resolution on this later in the town meeting. The next item is the consolidated expenses. And on this particular chart, it looks a little complicated, but we did this for a purpose. You'll see over on the, on the right-hand side, you'll see the modified Article Ten appropriations. And so, that's $10,944 for the town, $9,877 for the public school, $7,567 for the regional, and Minuteman, $648,000, for a total of $28,318. I believe you'll find that the Article Ten appropriation that we're coming into now, we will ask this body to approve $28,311,000, which is the Article Ten appropriation, as modified from the warrant, because the warrant had the A budget where this is the B budget. The other lines over on the left, you'll notice the bottom is $33,210. And so, this is how we put the chart together to show how, how we get the estimated expenses, and then calculate, taking away from those expenses, certain expenses, certain income that, you know, is derived in other, other ways, like from non-tax levy revenue and debt and interest. And so, these things were, were subtracted out or added onto, and so, the net result is to explain to you on this chart, as you look onto it, what the Article Ten appropriation is. Sorry, do you have a point of order, sir? If you would come to a microphone, please, and state your point of order.
This doesn't fit your requirements, but I would ask the speaker not to confuse thousands with millions.
Okay. Fair point of order. I stand corrected. I will not confuse from here on. This chart, the essence of this chart was in, in the, in the warrant, and it's just an attempt to show the town people the enterprise funds that we do have, and you've already voted on Articles Three, Four, Five, Six, and Seven, but those are the enterprise funds that we do have, what the estimated FY94 income is for 19, FY94 that we're coming up with, which we're dealing with now, and the requested FY94 appropriations, which you have already approved. And you'll notice the, the bottom line there indicates differences, and those estimated income and requested appropriations are included in the, in the statements that we just reviewed. This chart is an attempt to show, or does show, the maximum tax levy that your taxes are based on, from 1987 through 1994. And what happens is the maximum levy from last year is taken... And what happens is the maximum levy from last year is taken and we subtract the debt exclusion from that maximum levy from last year. And that becomes the levy basis for this year. And then two and a half percent is added on to that. And then new growth figure is added on to that. And then the general override, if there is one, is added on to that. And then the new debt exclusion is added on to that. Finally, you get the new maximum levy. And then you divide that by the number of taxpayers approximately. And then that becomes the tax bill. Now, I guess this is fairly complex because it goes on beyond there. And so, we would say, invite you to go to the Town Hall Tax Collector to specifically look at the tax statements in more detail. At that, you can view them at that time, the tax recap statement. But you'll notice that the maximum levy has increased every year, starting in eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, by about a hundred, one point six million dollars. And then two million from ninety-one to ninety-two. And then it's down to two point seven million for the last two years. And those increases are basically due to the two and a half percent increase. The next chart is simply to show that the tax levy as a percent of total appropriations is indicated. I did? Oh. We don't want to do that. Okay. I'll make up for it. Okay, that's the tax levy as a percent of total appropriations. And you can see that it's been steadily climbing up to about eighty-four percent. Now, it's eighty-two percent in nineteen ninety-three and it's eighty-two percent in nineteen ninety-four, FY ninety-four, according to the schedule that we'll be coming up with. Don't have many more. But the reserves at the beginning of the period, this is a little history for you. Do I have the wrong one again? Thank you. Higher? Okay. Okay, eighty-seven, you can see the free cash was one point six million dollars plus stabilization fund, which is not identified as an amount in there. And then you'll see with the nineteen ninety-four B budget that we're about to address, the free cash amount is estimated to be on July first of nineteen ninety-three, thirty thousand dollars. Not million dollars, thousand dollars. And if you add the reserve account, which is thirty-three thousand, the E and D account from the schools, you get in the neighborhood of two hundred thousand dollars. These are the Finance Committee recommendations. And basically, we are recommending the B budget to the town meeting. Mainly because the election has been held. We believe that increased taxes would not be achieved at this time. The decision that we made was made actually prior to the election being held. And we have been consistent with our principles from initial point in time. We did discuss several factors. And these factors are listed here, such as the recent election, certainly as a major favor. The economy, the taxation, ability of taxpayers to pay more taxes, efficiency improvement, impact on future overrides is a major factor that we're concerned about. The bond rating was mentioned. This is important. There could be a negative impact as a result of the B budget on the bond rating. On the other hand, it might not be a major impact. We don't know. We have had limited discussions on it. Real estate values, it's been said in some green flyers that those are major factors, that the B budget can have major factor on real estate. That is a possibility. But we think that we have not determined that empirically to know that that is a fact. The school choice monies could be impacted. We're not sure what will develop there, but it's possible that if... We have trouble seeing how we can go from an excellent school system to a mediocre school system when we lose five percent of the budget. But nevertheless, be that as it may, if we turn down that slope and continue to go down that way, it's possible that school choice money could be impacted and we could have less school choice money. Key thing is cost reductions versus service, alternative sources of revenue, and regional services. I guess I'll conclude the presentation with just a few comments on our recommendations. Most of these are in the warrant. Item number seven, prepare a model town meeting article to ask legislators to pass a local aid bill for funding allocation to municipal governments. That will come up at a later point in time in this town meeting. We have several other suggestions and recommendations that we hope that the town meeting will join with us in these recommendations. And we will be working to achieve these objectives in the days and months ahead. So we have the resources, we really do. We have talented people in place. We have a goodly amount of income that is flowing into the towns and into the schools. We have a lot to be thankful for. And if we put it all together and get our town together, I believe that we can make a go of this and I think things can turn upward. Thank you.
All right, it's now, I think, time to put the motion before the town. And it's a fairly long and complex motion, and I suspect you and I know it's going to be amended. What I'd like to do is I would like to lay the whole motion out and then have the explanations of the various portions of the budget made to you by whomever wishes to do that on behalf of the town, the school system, and Minuteman Vocational School. At that time, I will entertain any amendment that anybody wishes to make. I would like you to know that there really is no bottom line of twenty-eight or twenty-nine or thirty million dollars that you'll vote on. You will make four separate votes. One for municipal services, one for Acton Public Schools, one for Acton Boxborough Regional School District, and one for Minuteman. So you'll make four separate votes. So once again, we'll lay the motion before you. We will have one or more presentations, certainly one for the town, one for the school, and possibly one for the vocational school. Maybe two for the schools. Is that correct? Yeah, two. All right. As I say, this is a long and complex motion. Mrs. Tavernier moves that the town budget for the period July first, nineteen ninety-three to June thirtieth, nineteen ninety-four, in the amount of twenty-eight million, three hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and forty dollars be raised and appropriated in its entirety as follows. Except that, seventy-one thousand, four hundred and ten dollars be transferred from cemetery trust funds for cemetery use and the five thousand dollars be transferred from the county dog fund for library use and the twelve thousand dollars be transferred from wetland filing fees for the conservation department and that seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars be transferred from school choice fund for the Acton Public Schools and authorize the town manager to sell, trade, or dispose of vehicles being replaced. A. Municipal Services, ten million, nine hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. B. Acton Public Schools as follows. Operating expense, nine million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. Out-of-state travel, three thousand dollars. Blanchard Auditorium, thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. C. Acton Boxborough Regional School District as follows. Operating expense, seven million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. Net maturing debt and interest, three hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. D. Minuteman Technical School District, six hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We moved and seconded. Who would like to make the presentation? Mrs. Tavernier for Municipal Services.
Good evening. Before I begin my presentation, I'd like to quickly thank three groups of people here tonight. First, I wish to thank all of the town meeting members who have braved the elements on two occasions to come to be heard on issues that are important to all of us. I'm sorry for the inconvenience of the April twelfth meeting, and I hope that you're finding the situation more comfortable tonight. Secondly, I would like to thank some very special town employees. On the morning of April thirteenth, the town manager presented a challenge to the staff to completely take charge of arrangements for a new town meeting, one that could accommodate as many as three thousand people. I think that if you look around, you will see that they more than met the challenge. And I would like to particularly recognize our building commissioner, Gary Rhodes, who coordinated the entire event, working with our town clerk, Kathy Belvin. Other key staff people from the engineering, conservation, fire, police, municipal properties, and highway departments are also to be commended for their outstanding contributions to this event. The third... The third group of people to be thanked, hopefully, I'm thanking them in advance, is the Finance Committee for signaling their willingness to fund the extraordinary expenses of this meeting from the reserve fund for which they are the gatekeepers. Most of tonight's expenses indeed qualify as emergency and unforeseen. Thank you.